Okay, I think we've got all board members here. Let me do a quick look. One, two, three, four. Okay, so I guess we will resume the June fifteenth, twenty twenty U forty-six Board of Education meeting. I'd like to welcome all of our participants to the panel, including Olivia, our student board member. Before we do the pledge, I wanted to read again why we're still meeting in a virtual meeting. Governor Pritzker has signed Public Act one oh one dash six forty, which, among other things, amends the Open Meetings Act to allow public bodies to continue to hold virtual board meetings. As Board President, I have taken notice of the governor's declaration and I have determined that an in-person meeting, in-person Board of Education meeting is not practical or prudent because of the current health crisis. Therefore, all Board of Education meetings will be conducted by video conference without the physical presence of any board members until the governor declares that the health crisis is over. Okay, and if people could please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. First item on our agenda is Accent on Achievement.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Also, for the record, if you don't mind me noting that I am at the central office at the main administrative center. Our boardroom is open for members of the public, and at this point, nobody has arrived for, to publicly participate into, in the meeting in person. With that, we have our Accent on Achievement tonight is an award of excellence for our Financial Services Department. Every year, I know the board is really always appreciative of the amount that we are able to provide in our budget book annually that gets these high honors from two different agencies. With that, Madam President, would you like to read the Accent on Achievement for our Financial Services Department?
Mute. Certificate of Achievement, the Board of Education of School District U forty-six hereby recognizes the U forty-six Finance Department for being awarded the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Offices Association for the district's fiscal year twenty eighteen Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, as well as the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for fiscal year twenty nineteen and a meritorious budget award for fiscal year twenty nineteen by the Association of School Business Officials International, presented this fifteenth day of June, signed by Superintendent Tony Sanders and Board President Susan Kerr. And just in a personal note, I'd like to thank everyone in the Financial Services Department for the great work they do. I, as someone who always is looking at other districts' information and budgets, none even comes close to ours in being accessible, understandable, and having a real wealth of information. So this is very well deserved, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Dale, you want to say anything?
Sure, I would like to thank the board for recognizing us and all the work that we do to provide that information. I'd like to thank Robin for going through the extensive checklist to make sure we have all the items we need in those reports. Those lists are pretty long. There's like six pages of things we need to have in there, so she makes sure we have all that in there. And I'd also like to thank any, all of our staff, some of which are watching, for doing all the work behind the scenes to get us the reports accurately and.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sanders, Strategic Plan Report.
Thank you very much, Madam President, members of the board. You're all aware that we've been continuing, been continuing to do our equity work. We have an amazing equity team that's been really committed to this work and moving us forward. And one of the things that they recommended was doing a equity and inclusion survey of our students. And here to present the results of that tonight and give you a glimpse of what we're doing, planning for next school year, is Dr. Suzanne Johnson, and I'll let her introduce the rest of the team.
So, good evening, and again, thank you for the opportunity to present with a distinguished team of colleagues tonight, some of our equity work to date this. So tonight, I am joined by Dr. Angie Ernst, Principal of Huff Elementary School, by Dr. Rochelle Bly, Assistant Principal of Huff Elementary School, by Ms. Karen Baldwin, SIT Team Member of Huff Elementary School, by Ms. Lisa Jackson, Coordinator of Assessment and Accountability, and also by Mr. Brian Lindholm, Coordinator of Strategic Initiatives. As part of our equity plan, the Equity Committee need for a student survey and a tool to assist with this process. This spring, we surveyed students in grades four through twelve to gather data concerning equitable and inclusive practices experiences in School District U forty-six. The survey was completed independently and in the midst of our school closures due to COVID nineteen. At this time, Brian Lindholm will provide an overview of the survey.
Thank you. As Dr. Johnson mentioned, we invited all of our students in grades four through twelve to complete this survey as a way to capture their valuable voice in an ongoing equity work. Survey ran through May twenty-second, and we received our data on May twenty-ninth. So we wanted to get this in front of the board to share some of our preliminary findings. School administrators also have access to their own dashboards with visibility to the district-level data as well as their individual schools data. And we introduced the, the survey results to the elementary school improvement teams in their end-of-year planning sessions, and we'll do the same with middle and high schools in July. So we received five thousand five hundred and seven responses to the survey, which is about a twenty-two percent response rate. The response rate was actually slightly disappointing, although we knew that it would have been much higher had, had we been in buildings and we could have dedicated times, time during the school day for students to take the survey. Although, when, when we've consulted with the Panorama Research Team, they have reminded us that a higher response rate is usually better, but not always. And there's no absolute threshold at which the survey data becomes valid. The larger issue is to make sure that the responses are representative of our student body and not biased based on which of our fifty-five-hundred-plus students responded to the survey. So as we look deeper into the response rates, it is apparent that our responses weren't entirely representative of our student body, so we will need to keep that in mind as we review and try to interpret the results. So a few of the things that stood out in our response rates, the female response rate was higher than male. So we had twenty-seven percent response for females, and we had only sixteen percent response for males, which I thought was interesting. Students in our gifted programs were twice as likely to complete the survey at about forty-two percent. Students with lower than ninety percent attendance were about half as likely to complete the survey, around eleven percent. African-American male students were also half as likely to complete the survey, eleven percent. And we had the highest participation in our grades six through eight, where we had nearly twenty-seven percent. And the lowest was actually in our high schools, which was surprising to me. So in that grades nine through twelve, we had about eighteen percent of our students complete the survey. The survey itself was divided into four topic areas with, with several questions under each. And the, the topic labeled U forty-six Student Summit is a collection of some of the best questions that, that we received from our student leaders at the summit held at ECC in February. The blue bars on this slide represent percent favorable in each topic area, which basically means the top two responses to a given question. So you can see the example in the bottom corner where they say, how excited are you about going to this class? If the respondent had, had selected quite excited or very excited, those would be considered favorable, and anything less than that would be considered not favorable. So this is a, an example of what we get from the Panorama dashboards. And, and one of the best things with the dashboards is the ability to see how different student groups responded to each topic area or even to individual questions within a topic area. So in this example, the, the first area shows how our African-American male students responded relative to the all respondents group. And, and you'll see the different shades of, of red in, in that row for the yes to African-American male students, which means they scored lower in every topic area. So this is, is a student group that we want to pay particular attention to. The second area then was, was student groups based on attendance. And you can see the students who had less than ninety percent attendance, again, responded lower in all areas, but especially the, the area of sense of belonging, where you can see the deeper shade of red. So I know when Lisa Jackson and I reviewed this data for the first time, we thought this was an interesting area because you almost question which would come first. Did the students, did the students, so are students not coming to school because they don't have a sense of belonging? Or are they missing a lot of school for whatever reason, and as a result, they don't have that sense of belonging? So I, I don't know that we have the answer to that yet, but I think it's an interesting question to consider. And then the last student group shown on this page are the, the EL students. And you can see that they scored slightly higher in three of the four topic areas, but quite a bit lower in the area of diversity and inclusion. So this would be another data point that we would want to dive into quite a bit deeper to understand what's driving these responses from our English learners. In each topic area, we can then see how students and different students groups responded to each of the individual questions. So within the cultural awareness topic area, which, which was the area that, that our responses were the lowest, I, I picked two of the questions here that came out of that topic area. The question on top was actually the, the, the question in this area that had the highest favorable response rate at forty-nine percent. So this is saying that basically half of our students are confident that students at their school can have honest conversations with each other about race. The question in that topic area that had the lowest response rate was how often do students at your school actually have those important conversations about race, even when they might be uncomfortable? Only thirteen percent responded favorably. So as we looked at this, you know, we admitted, you know, could this mean we're missing valuable opportunities to have these types of conversations with our students? We also wondered how this response may have looked different had we given the survey today, given the events of recent weeks. We're also able to ask free response questions in our survey, where students are able to elaborate and provide specific examples of their experiences in our schools. And this is sometimes the source of some of the richest feedback in these types of surveys. So I'll hand it off to my colleague Lisa Jackson now to present an example of this.
Thank you, Brian. So this is a word cloud, and it's a special word cloud. Panorama provides a word cloud analysis, so when you click on any of the commonly used words in the cloud, it will show you the exact response from our students. So when I saw the word cloud, I was not surprised I was pulled up based on the question. However, when Brian and I clicked on the N-word, we were shocked. One student said, one teacher used the N-word with the hard ER at the end and said it like three to six times in one day. So because this is an analysis, our schools are accustomed to going through a data reflection protocol, and I will model that. It has four parts. Here is one, understand, two, review, react, three is reflect and connect, and four is to produce. So the understand part, Brian explained to us what the data represent, who is included in the data, and when the survey was taken. So those are the things that we can understand. View and react is basically what stands out to you. So first, what stood out to us or what stood out to me is that a teacher actually used the word. And secondly, that the teacher actually used the actual word. Not word, but the actual word. So our reflect and connect part would be how teaching and learning played a part in these results. And so, well, maybe they were reading something like Huckleberry Finn. And the response to that would be why, reading Huckleberry Finn or something like it. And not something that is culturally, that culturally, that is culturally relevant to our students. And then the produce piece is where do we go from here? So I will begin by asking, you know, the team, ourselves, whoever I'm working with, what is our process for finding relevant and affirming resources for our students? What role do our students play in determining with which resources they will be engaging? And then what structures are in place for this type of behavior from a teacher to be reported by a student? And if we have them, are they working? And how do we know that they are? And if they, if we don't have them, what is our plan to do so? So there's another response there on that word cloud, and I'll read it. My class of all white males, in my class of all white males, was being told by one student, my ideas on the Black Lives Matter protest was irrational. Then he would throw pencils in my hair, say edgy jokes about my race, and make me feel overall powerless. So the review and react piece, what stands out? That there was actually physical, mental, and emotional abuse, to say the least. The reflect, how might a teaching and learning played a part in these results? So I will ask, so what type of class is this where all of the students except one are white males? Is this an anomaly, or is, how common is this? And then the produce, so where do we go from here? The Black Lives Matters protest, something that we will have to address, and we must decide what our course of action will be. So Brian, could you go to the, the next slide, please? So here are a few bright spots in our data. And I believe this first response on this slide is a bright spot for two reasons. So eighty-six percent of the twenty percent of students who took the survey responded favorably. They believe that all students have the opportunity for success at their school, so that's, that's favorable. The second piece to that same question that is a bright spot is that the same question provides us an opportunity to put it, that question on the table in front of our students and allow them to engage in why they believe, why they have these beliefs, and to produce evidence to support those beliefs. Students are capable of having these types of high-level discussions that matter to their futures, and they, based on the survey, have said that they would like to have these conversations. The second response, where it says eighty-one percent responded favorably to having personally experienced discrimination or, or race, culture, and ethnicity-based inequality within their school. So a favorable response to this question would be a no. Well, this is definitely a good thing, but we have to remember that at least one of the nineteen students who responded unfavorably, because we just talked about it, the, the student who had the pencils thrown in her hair, had a horrific experience. The last response, seventeen percent responded favorably that they hang out with students from different races and ethnicities. This is definitely encouraging. Suzanne will be speaking next.
Thank you, Lisa. Just days after our elementary schools wrestled with this data, we convened as leaders to review our student data holistically, reflect, and consider actionable items. In doing so, we were inspired by the candid conversation with former Secretary of Education Arne Duncan. His ability to reflect their numerous considerations for moving our schools and communities forward had us all engaged and motivated to do better for our students and to do better for our students immediately, here and now, not waiting a moment longer. We were considering our successes, but also identifying the impact of violence, poverty, and the desperate need for systems that provide equitable access, pathways, support for students, households, families, systems that create welcoming environments, and most importantly, provide access for all students at all times. This brought us all readily to embrace this need for action and engage in conversation with our colleagues. Brian, you can move on to the next slide. We spent time that day in small groups with administrators from across the school district, confronted and pondering numerous questions, really pushing us to embark upon honest conversations, taking on that responsibility for our students. Do we believe that we're capable of doing this work? Do we believe that our students are capable of doing this work? How do we come together to do this work? What about our professional development? What will be needed to make us better? And how soon can we access that professional development? And what about fall of twenty twenty? When it does arrive and our students return to in-person instruction or a hybrid or blended model of instruction, what will we be prepared to do differently so that our students have a different experience and different outcomes in School District U forty-six? And how does this work tie and align to our continuous improvement efforts and our school improvement? You can move on to the next slide, Brian. As we conversed, members took notes, detailed notes of our conversations. And this graphic represents some of our key takeaways. And as you can see, a similar word or word cloud, you can pull out some of the words and the thoughts, the values and beliefs that were most often discussed. Staff stands out. Staff meaning all, not teachers or administrators, but all of us, everyone who touches the lives of our students in U forty-six. The word can stands out. Positive connotation that we are able, willing, and we want to do the work. Third word that stands out. Will and school, needs, knows, district change, student, and address, all embedded within our equity plan, our strategic plan, and our desire to use improvement for our students. Lisa Jackson will now share more about our updates to our continuous improvement work.
Thank you, Suzanne. So, school year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty marks the third year of our three-year school improvement cycle. The plans moving forward for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three have a new structure which allows us to bring to the forefront the importance of social and emotional wellness for our students. This has been found within our plans for many years. However, we know that the scars of COVID nineteen and the current enlightenment for many of our racial injustices and inequalities will have to be addressed in our schools. And we believe that a specific focus on social and emotional wellness will be an additional space for that to happen. We're using this space to begin our work of listening to and hearing from our young people. At this time, only a small number of them speaking to us through the Equity and Inclusion Survey. Standards-Based Learning and Assessment and Family and Community remain to be the two other district-wide school goal statements. Our early childhood learning goals, goal has now merged with the Standards-Based Learning and Assessment Home. I do want to bring to your attention that as our school improvement teams are taking a fresh look at their plans for improvement, there will be areas within the plan that appear quote-unquote incomplete. This is not the case. They are in the phase of reflecting on what they and we, the U forty-six community, know, what they and we thought we knew, and what they and we need to know as we move forward to make true and meaningful change in our collective practices. These must be plans with strategies to act. I will now read a quote from Dr. Mark Jr. that reminds us that what we do or do not do will make the difference. In this case, what we do or do not do through our continuous improvement process. The challenge we face tonight around powerful action programs to eradicate the last vestiges of racial injustice, we will be greatly misled if we feel that the problem works itself out. Structures of evil do not crumble by passive weight. If history teaches anything, it is that evil is recalcitrant and determined and never voluntarily relinquishes its hold short of an almost fanatical resistance. Evil must be attacked by a counteracting persistence, by the day-to-day assault of the battering rams of justice. In this book, where do we go from here in our produce? That's what we say in our produce. Where do we go from here? Chaos or community? So now the Huff team, they will share how they're working to affirm their students' identity by honoring their students' voices.
Good evening, esteemed board members and Superintendent Sanders. On behalf of Huff Elementary, we are grateful for the opportunity to share our work centered around equity. As a Latina leader, it has been my mission to be instrumental in speaking about equity and inclusion, the best means of serving our students, parents, and families. As a staff, as a member of our Equity Committee, one of my proudest moments has been the newly adopted Equity Plan that has led the path to our Panorama Equity Survey, giving our students the voice to share their perspective, which will lead our school district to greater equitable practices and accomplishments. At Huff Elementary, we had thirty-six participants take the survey. Twenty-two of those students were sixth graders. One would say it is only fourteen point nine percent. I would encourage us to see it as a brush stroke of color to our equity canvas, a sensational opportunity for our students to speak to us about their humanity, their most precious gift to us, their race, culture, and language. It was fascinating to read our students' responses. As many as those students have been with us since preschool, a total of eight years. A significant representation of our work at Huff since our staff has been on this journey of equity alongside me year after year. The results affirmed our mission, purpose of having a caring and dedicated staff that is willing to go the extra mile to support our students. The results also highlighted the need to address being to our students about race. It is my greatest hope that our solutions and the needs we unveil become a systematic approach on the promise of equity. When reviewing our results, our school improvement team had three takeaways, which we will work towards. The first one, reflect upon our current practices to ensure that our values become actions that are consistent and measurable. Second, center around the inquiry of teaching and learning, improving our students' culture and language while maintaining high expectations in culturally responsive classrooms. In our third initiative, review of current communication practices with our parents, providing time and space for parents to ask questions about their child's academic goals and progress, especially when there is a need for an intervention. Dr. Bly and Ms. Baldwin will share our next steps as to how we will achieve our takeaways.
Good evening. During our meeting, we, this, this year, we decided to look at the equity commitments that was completed by U forty-six members this year. The main pillars of the Equity Committee includes, the first one is academic achievement, which was a promise to strive. We made a promise to strive for high-quality and culturally-relevant instruction, resources, and pathways to high academic achievement. The second pillar was effective and engaged staff, and that was a promise to provide, to provide professional development around diversity, to strengthen knowledge, and eliminate disparities. The third pillar of commitment for equity was the effective and engaged staff, which, which was a promise to provide, to provide, sorry, I'm sorry, the, the third one was family and community engagement, which was a promise of empowerment. So we wanted to empower families and the surrounding community to build equitable partnerships, including businesses and nonprofit organizations. The fourth pillar was excellence, efficiency, and accountability, which was, which was a promise of transparency. We wanted to be transparent and update staff appeal process, including. We wanted to be transparent and update staff appeal process, including adding weighted eligibility criteria and also include a strong focus, a strong focus on targeted student groups and to make sure that they are cared for academically, financially, and progressively. So taking the data that we collected and taking into consideration the commitments that were created by the Equity Committee, we decided that we would also establish our equity promise. And our equity promise is explained in our socially-emotional wellness commitment. And our commitment reads Huff School Improvement Team will support our effective and engaged staff to reflect upon our current practices to ensure our values become action that are consistent and measurable. To ensure that equitable practices are on the forefront of all staff members' minds, our school improvement team will embed opportunities for professional development to strengthen staff's knowledge of cultural and linguistic responsive classrooms. In addition, our school improvement team will center around the equity of teaching and learning, elevating our students' culture and language while maintaining high expectations. These practices will motivate classroom environments that are inclusive and provide students with a sense of belonging to celebrate our students' knowledge and culture which make up our world. And that is the work that our school improvement team has committed to so far. And this is a working process. This is a work in progress. Next, I will hand it over to Karen to share her mission and vision.
Thank you, Dr. Bly. Good evening, everyone. As a member of the school improvement team, after we were given time to discuss as a team, we realized that while our mission is incredible and it really guides everything that we do, it's not truly a mission and vision statement. So our mission is to educate our diverse population in a creative and safe atmosphere where students are engaged and families are involved. And from there, we developed our own vision statement, which reads Huff will empower students to be self-motivated, lifelong learners who believe in themselves and aspire to achieve their fullest potential today and always, with that idea in mind that we really are trying to focus on equity and how can we reflect that in the work that we do as teachers and so that our students can be successful. And our work continued and we tried to honor it to serve our students with a recommitment to our community and just trying to make them as involved as possible. And we were really guided by a very powerful quote from William Perkey, who wrote Becoming an Invitational Leader. And it reads, "A student is the most important person ever in the school, in person, on the telephone, via Zoom, or by mail. A student is not dependent on us, we are dependent on the student. A student is not an interruption of our work, the student is the purpose of it. We are not doing a favor by serving the student. The student is doing us a favor by giving us the opportunity to do so. A student is a person who brings us his or her desire to learn. It is our job to handle each student in a manner which is beneficial to the student and ourselves. Students are the reasons we became teachers and they're the reasons we come to school every day." The quote aligns to our mission as a school district in that School District U46 is committed to the success of every student in every school. The work we are doing to self-reflect as teachers to create more equitable learning spaces is going to support all of our students to be successful. The changes we have made and are going to continue to make on our SIP plan at Huff, as it pertains to the equity standards and social-emotional learning, are of utmost importance to us because they directly affect our students and their growth as human beings. We thank you for inviting us to speak on behalf of Huff. I now would like to pass it off to Dr. Johnson, who will share the major milestones from the Equity Committee this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate our team from Huff tonight sharing their work. So as we reflect and we look forward as well, a brief overview of some of the accomplishments in alignment with the Equity Plan this year. A revision to our student selection process for both academy programs and the gifted program as well. Professional development that will be provided this summer, yet to come in July. In collaboration with NIU, Social Justice Camp is going all online to podcasts and that opportunity will be available to all U46 staff later this summer. The student survey, which will allow us to build a needs assessment for our staff based off of our student data. And a revision to enrollment fees for extension learning for students and also providing access to technology and Wi-Fi to support distance learning for all students in U46. And we look forward to providing regular and ongoing updates of the work in alignment to the Equity Plan. All right, you can move on. Finally, tonight, in 2014, the Board of Education approved our district's Equity Policy 2.250 with the primary goal of ensuring that all students will meet or exceed college and career readiness standards and be fully prepared to become contributing members of our society. In 2018, we formed a district-wide Equity Committee and presented that team's plan to the Board last November 2019. As you've seen tonight, the committee has been very committed and diligent in executing against that plan this year. And yet, recent events have highlighted the sense of urgency in our work and the feeling that we're not moving fast enough. We appreciate that the Board will be reviewing a resolution and a call to action statement this evening that commits our employees, our students, and our community to support this vitally important work of equity. This concludes our presentation and we look forward to responding to your questions and taking feedback at this time. Thank you.
And if the Board doesn't mind, let me add just a few more comments before we open it up for any Board comments or questions. On June 1st, in the wake of Minneapolis and multiple other tragedies across our country, we had an all administrator Zoom meeting just to come together and talk through our feelings and our thoughts. And I left it open-ended for anybody to stay and share any feedback they had with me about any structures or processes that impede our work, especially in the area of equity. Dr. Greg Becker of South Eldred High School stuck around till the very end and he said, "If you value something, you should see it committed in your time and in your resources." And that stuck with me. Tonight, hearing Ms. Bly say that our values become action in the Huff Plan. Clearly, we are a values-driven organization, but sometimes I don't know that we're explicit in the resources we've identified to really address the areas of need across our school system. So, one of the things that in addition to the call to action that we'll be bringing forward to the Board is the prospect of shifting resources to make sure that we are appropriately addressing the professional development needs of all staff, knowing that implicit racial bias training does not happen very well in an online tutorial. It has to be done in in-person courageous conversations that we should have very explicit money set aside for recruitment and retaining a staff that reflects the diverse workforce or the diversity of our student population. And finally, more resources aimed at addressing our black male students who are often over-identified for special education services. I'm sure there'll be additional resources that we'll need to commit, but that's one of my commitments to the Board is to bring forward a plan to address at least those three areas within this upcoming budget. And with that, certainly the team would be glad to take any Board feedback.
Would Board members have any comments or questions?
This is Melissa. I want to clarify a couple of things on the presentation and just bear with me because it's hard. I'm working on one computer and it's hard to kind of scroll back through the presentation. But on the, there were the four categories, so like diversity and inclusion, U46 students summit, sense of belonging, culture awareness, and action. For the U46 Student Summit, those were survey questions that arose out of the Student Summit?
Yes, we had an opportunity, actually during the lunch that day. Our Equity Committee presented an update to students. And the activity that we led them through were, what questions should we be asking you? So we kind of described our work. We talked about how the value that we're placing on capturing that student voice. So we asked them to, at their table, talk about what kind of things, if they were in our position, should we be asking students to better understand their experiences? We had great feedback, I mean hundreds of responses. And so we went through those and picked out six or seven questions that we felt kind of best represented the types of feedback we were hoping to get from the survey.
Okay. Is there any way that we can get a list of what those questions were?
Yes, definitely. And we talked about whether it made sense to give you this overview first and then provide the full report or vice versa. So I think what we'll do is just right after the session tonight, we'll send you the full PDF with all of the questions that were asked and how the responses should add for each.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you so much for that. And then my second question is on the slide, and let me find it, where we talk about the bright spots in our data. I just want to clarify because the way that I read it originally before the presentation, the second question, have you ever personally experienced discrimination or race, cultural, ethnicity-based inequality within your school? And it says 81% responded favorably. So I just want to clarify that that means that 19% of our students said, yes, I've experienced discrimination. And 81% of the students said, no, I have not experienced discrimination.
That's absolutely correct. Yes, a favorable answer would be no to that question.
Okay, just want to make sure because when you're reading it on the presentation, that's not entirely clear. So I just, I wanted to make sure on that. Going forward, do we have any plans to try to engage more of the student body in a follow-up survey since the response percentage was pretty low for this time around?
Yeah, I think the part of the power of doing these surveys in some ways is doing them year after year so that we can also see where hopefully that we're trending in the right direction in some of these areas. And then especially given that the fact that we had to administer this survey under kind of the extreme circumstances. The original plan was we would have set aside, like I said, time during the school day. And instead of 27% student participation, we would have had 95% participation or something, you know? So yes, we definitely plan to do it again next school year. It's just a matter of are we going to follow up earlier in the fall or will we wait and do it in the spring, about a year later from where this first round was?
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Did you give the percentages of how many students was African-American that took the survey? Did you get that information?
Yes, Ms. Porter. So actually, I provided some where we were significantly off of the overall students and were African-American males. It was only 11%. The females was quite a bit, or African-American females was quite a bit higher. So the overall African-American response rate was 17 or 18%. And I'll give you that exact number versus 21, 22% for all students. A little bit lower, but not too much.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Was there anything in the survey that took you by surprise? Was there any one school or area that seemed to indicate that there were real problems? You don't have to name the school if they were. Anything jump out at you?
I think one thing that surprised me and I was glad that Dr. Ernst and the Huff team shared some of their responses to their data was we got some really great feedback from elementary students, more than I expected. So, you know, the overall response rates were basically as high or higher than we had from some of the upper grades. And really, even some of the open-ended responses that we got back from our younger students were really, really thoughtful. It was surprising in a positive way. As Lisa mentioned, with the free response example that we gave, there was some stuff that it was hard to read. I mean, there were things that made us all uncomfortable as we saw what our students were telling us. But I think it's part of the process and it's, you know, it's why we did the survey and we wanted them to give us that sort of unfiltered data. So it was a little uncomfortable to read, but I think it's, like I say, it's capturing what our students really are experiencing.
And you mentioned that the, each principal got, I guess, the results for his or her school. Will they be doing things this summer to work with staff or to develop plans to address some of the things that came up in the survey?
Yeah, I don't know, Lisa, if you want to answer this, but this is sort of a new piece of data that our school improvement teams had for planning for next year that they hadn't in previous years. So we set aside time during their planning days to walk them through their dashboards in terms of how to disaggregate by the different student groups, you know, how to apply Lisa's, the approach that she walked you through in terms of, you know, review, reflect, react, that same kind of protocol. So yes, this is definitely supposed to be an important piece of data that school improvement teams will consider.
Other questions, comments?
So a comment on something that Brian just said and the fact that we got a lot of great responses from our elementary students. I wonder if that's, part of that is out of the fact that we do a lot of social-emotional work with our elementary students? And if that's giving rise or giving voice to some of those responses? And maybe that's tailing off a little bit at the high school level? It's just a comment. I don't know if you have any reflection on that.
I think that's, while it's a comment, it's an additional question for us to consider, especially moving forward this fall, as we know, you know, we're having to our additional social-emotional support will be for students. So I think there is certainly something there for us to unpack. You know, with that, my, so I appreciate that, that question or if a comment, but I appreciate the fact that it's going to give us some more questions.
So I have a question. Have you ever considered giving a survey just to African-American students to see what their feedback would be? In isolation?
So, Ms. Porter, I think that's a very good question there. You know, to actually look at the kids that didn't take the survey, I'm sure the great majority of them might be the African-American students that may have responded unfavorably. Gather that information, create a plan around those students. Something to think about.
Thank you.
I just want to say thanks for doing this. This was really enlightening information and just the tidbits we were able to get from the presentation were kind of heartbreaking. So I'm anxious to get into the full information and dig into it and make a plan. This feels like a tangible way to start a plan and I like that. So, thank you.
Will we be sharing this with community partners as well to get their support?
I think, my thought not to jump too far ahead in where we're going with the rest of the Board meeting tonight would be that, yes, it's essential that we share information with our community stakeholders.
Agreed.
Any other comments or questions?
We actually committed to sharing out the results once we were done.
Yeah. Sorry, Mr. Sanders, when we had presented, it feels like a lifetime ago in CSC in February or March, we had shared at that time that we would bring data back. So I think the question for us will be, what's the format? What will that look like at this point?
Okay. Can we plan to put this on an agenda in the next few months? You know, do you have an idea yet of when we could discuss it again? Because I don't want this to be forgotten. Not that you will forget it, but just that I would like regular timely information on the steps following this report.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much for all this work. This is very valuable and this is a lot to think about and what tells us what we need to be doing. So. Hey, next on the agenda, other business board member and superintendent update. Any, sorry, I'm trying to get my screen working here.
You know, only update before, if you want to get to it before the UFRG is called Equity, called Action, called to Action, is that we continue to work as an administrative team at identifying options for next school year. We continue to wait for further guidance from the State Board of Education and the State Health Department about what Phase Four will look like. We do know that we probably will not be able to wait until the July meeting to provide that update to the Board of where we are. We do expect to get that guidance from ISB anywhere between the next week to month is the latest that we are hearing. But we would like to try to schedule a special board meeting to give you that update as quickly as we possibly can. Once we have the ISB guidance. So if you don't mind, we'll be contacting board members to schedule a special board meeting as soon as we can.
Anyone else? We board member comments?
Well, I did have some comments. It's pretty lengthy. Is this the time to do that?
Sure.
Okay, I'm very proud of District U forty six and the resolution that's on the call to action and equity and the presentation that was just presented. I wrote this before that, so bear with me because you have addressed a lot of the issues that I was concerned about. The YouTube video made by the principal speaks volumes to me that black lives matter. It is a step in the right direction. However, words must be followed by action that's ongoing. And I can see that the district is ongoing and making sure that our students get what they need, all students. We have been seen, we have seen regarding the treatment of African Americans on TV and the horrible things that are happening in the world. For some, this is new. For some, this is ongoing. It's not new to us. It has just finally caught up caught up with the attention of the entire world because the cameras were on. Sometimes the cameras are not on, but this has been happening. The protests that you see on TV is a demonstration of hurt and pain in the community and a call to action. The U forty six Equity Policy was put in place in twenty fourteen, which has already been addressed with the primary objective of ensuring that by graduation, all students will meet and exceed college and career readiness standards and be fully prepared for becoming contributing members of society. We all stand by that. Our students are part of that experience that you see on TV being played out. We need to make sure that we examine and recruit African American teachers, counselors and the like. Classroom multicultural books and materials that reflect our diverse population for all students. I know a couple of weeks ago, we talked about multicultural curriculum for the Latino students. We have to do the same thing for the African American students too, to make sure that we have books in the classroom that reflect them. Just a sideline, I was at a school once. I was the first African American teacher there. When I went into the library, there were no books that reflected any of the students that were in the building. All of the students that were in the building. I wrote a grant and made sure that there were books that were placed in that library. And it was ongoing from that point on. What a success. We need to make sure that we examine our recruitment, as I said, of African American teachers, counselors and the like, classroom multicultural books that reflect the diverse population and the curriculum that tells the full story, the true story. Because everyone needs to know the truth. So when we are picking curriculum, we need to make sure that the books that we are choosing are books that reflect everyone as well. Everyone benefits from the truth. We are progressing, but yet we still have a long way to go. We witnessed the economic divide of our students in the district, transitioning from distance learning or e-learning. Families that lack resources, Wi-Fi, internet services, mobile devices, computers, Chromebooks and even food. And I think the district did a wonderful job. You saw what the need was and you met that need. But it put a spotlight on the disparity and the inequity that our community is in. There are dire needs, things that we take for granted that we just assume everyone has. Everyone doesn't have that. And we know now that everyone doesn't have that because we had to experience it. Why do we have to experience it before we did something about it? In twenty fourteen, you said the equity was put into place. So we should have been investigating those type of things. I want to make sure that this district does well. And that we do well by the community. The district quickly, as I said, acted and did a wonderful job of making sure that the needs were met and things were put in place to close the gap so that all children could learn. As I understand, it was ninety seven percent of the students that had computers or Chromebooks, and that's great. But I wondered about the other. Did the pandemic cause us to act as quickly? We need to act as if there was a pandemic every day with a sense of urgency. We only have these students for a short period of time. We must keep in mind that students often come burdened with adult problems of home and yet must sit in the classroom and prepare to learn. We have no idea what that's that's like. Students come to school, they bear the burdens of adults. And when they come to school, we want to make sure that they have a safe place, that they are treated properly. We must prepare to assist all of our students and in depth special sensitivity and diversity training upon their return. Many have suffered during the time of COVID nineteen, the loss of family members, job loss of families, financial stress multiplied, changes in living situations and racial inequality. We must take a deep look into how we are serving our brown and black students and implement the necessary changes which we are doing. Again, we need to make sure that we have people that look like black and brown and white children that we represent in this district. We need counselors, administrators, SROs who need every we need everyone to have ongoing proper training to support our students mentally, emotionally, and how to deescalate a situation when it arrives. We must be intentional and we must address the inequalities that this district face. We have committed to the success of all students, haven't we? Yes, we have. We have to educate ourselves as educators on systematic racism and implicit biases. When we know better, we do better. We have to address the inequities. And I want to thank the Equity Committee. You did a great job of presenting tonight. Thank you for listening. And guess what? I can breathe. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. Anyone else? Okay, I guess we'll move on to the resolution then. The call to action, Mr. Sanders?
So the, thank you, Board of Education. Again, this is a U forty six call to action for equity. It aligns directly to the Board's policy. We did put it out for for our employees and members of the public to sign on. At this point, five hundred and sixteen individuals have signed on. I know our our teachers' union, our all the region sixty three support unions were fully in support of this call to action for equity. Members of the public are signing on as well. But with that, I administration believed it was the right time that the equity policy is not just a top down from the Board of Education to administration, but really it has to be broader than that. We need everybody working to support us in this in this important, important work. Otherwise, it's just not going to happen. They have to hold me accountable, my administration accountable, the board accountable, and that doesn't happen if it's top down. It's got to come from the bottom up. So that was why this was brought forward to the Board of Education for consideration.
If you have comments, questions, suggestions?
Sure, this is John Deveraux. Yeah, just to pick up on some of the things that have been said so far, obviously, recent events, which are a reflection of much broader and ever present issues and events have put a bright light on the challenges faced by our black and brown communities, particularly respect with respect to the justice system, but also in society more broadly, including education. It is really simple and necessary to acknowledge that black lives do in fact matter. So this time, we have to turn that light inwards to self reflect, recognize our strengths, but acknowledge where we're falling short as Ms. Porter just acknowledged said, we need to do more, we need to do better, and we can, as was suggested earlier, put action to our values. So so I'm glad to be support or to support recommitting ourselves to these principles of equitable access, equitable opportunities for everybody. And in doing so, I think we can, you know, be a real force and affect real change for the students and family of U forty six. So very pleased that we've put this together and that we're moving forward.
Other board members, any comments?
I just echo what Mr. Deveraux said. I appreciate that we, the the method of putting this equity call to action forward to the community because I I really do strongly feel as we we can't we need everybody engaged in this, right? I mean, this is this is a societal problem that none of us are going to solve on our own. Elgin, Bartlett, Streamwood, Carroll Stream, you know, all of the the thirteen municipalities that make up U forty six were all strong communities, but we need everybody to to pull together and lift our students up and lift our community members up. I appreciate the work that the staff has has done up until this point, but again, there is a real sense of urgency because we you know, as Eva said, we only have these these students for a short period of time. And so I I appreciate everybody that has signed on to this. I do believe as a board member, I have my own work that I need to do in this area. And I think, you know, probably a lot of us feel that way. But I'm glad that we are putting this front and center so that we can refocus our energy where where it is vitally needed to improve everybody's you know, the the work that everybody is doing.
And I would I would agree with both John and Melissa that one thing I like about this, this is not just a resolution, it's a call to action that we have to actually, you know, do something, put, you know, not to say that we're going to do something. And I would urge the district to to you know, be flexible. You may start out doing certain things and then realize that we may need to or some schools may need to try something else to to reach these goals and and to you know, not do a one size fits all approach, but but realize that the different schools may have different needs for this with their students, but I'm very proud of this and I fully support it. So thank you. So do I need, should I read this? How do we want to do this?
I'm not sure that you need to read the whole thing unless
I know.
It's been on for everybody to read, so.
Okay. Do we, and we do vote on it, is that correct?
That was administrations or our recommendation was that you would vote on it tonight. Yes.
Okay.
I think it's read because I think some people might not have heard it or seen it. Don't, they'll skip over it.
Okay. Okay, I will take a minute. I've got to get back on my screens. I've got to get zoom out.
Sue, if you want to split the reading or something to someone else can help if you want.
You say I've got it on two screens. So if you'd like, I can read it into the record if that would be beneficial.
Sure, I mean, that either be the way.
It's the U forty six call to action for equity, the Board of Education, Illinois School District U forty six Resolution and Call to Action for Equity. Whereas the School District U forty six Board of Education passed the Equity Policy two point two five zero in twenty fourteen with the primary objective of ensuring that by graduation, all students will meet or exceed college and career writing standards and be fully prepared to become contributing members of society. Whereas the Board of Education believes that it is the responsibility of this school district to give each student the opportunity and support to meet his or her highest potential. Whereas we recognize historic and persistent achievement and or excellent gaps disparities in data with respect to graduation rates and inequities and reported incidents of student misconduct when comparing students of various ethnic and racial backgrounds. Whereas our country, state and region have been reflected have reflected upon and sought action a result of the tragic killings of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor and Ahmaud Arbery, resulting in protests across the country. Whereas we believe that a public statement is not enough to compel action to address the persistent policies, practices and structures that continue to marginalize students, staff and community members of color. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of School District U forty six, Kane, DuPage and Cook Counties of Illinois that we reaffirm our commitment to equity and educational justice. And we will seek to address the equity issues impacting our schools and the entire U forty six community. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education reaffirms Board Policy two point two five zero as amended and also issues a call to action and request our employees, students and community to commit to the implementation of the policy, including one, providing every student with equitable access to high quality and culturally relevant instruction, curriculum, educational resources and supports needed to be successful. Two, creating multiple pathways to success in order to meet the needs of our diverse student body. Three, encouraging, supporting and expecting high academic achievement from all students. Four, investing resources aimed at recruiting and retaining a teacher, support and administrative workforce that reflects the diversity of the student body. Five, participating in professional development to strengthen employee knowledge and skills and eliminating disparities in achievement based on race and or ethnicity. Six, remitting any practices that lead to over representation of students of color in special education and student discipline. Seven, remitting any practices that lead to under representation of students of color in programs such as gifted programs, honor academies and advanced placement courses. Eight, welcoming, empowering and recognizing students and families of all racial and ethnic backgrounds as essential partners in their students' education, school planning and district decision making. And nine, ensuring equal access to programs for which they qualify.
Okay, could I have a motion then to approve the attached this this resolution and the call to action?
Oh, this is Veronica.
Second, this is Kate.
Any comments or questions? Excuse me, roll call, please.
Mrs. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion approved seven zero.
Thank you all. So we have a lot of work to do, but needs to be done. Our next is comments from the audience, and I believe we have at least one, Mr. Sanders.
We do have at least one, and I will ask Ruby to read into the record the protocol for public comments at this time. And while she's doing so, I think there's a second comment request from Mr. Allen. If he could just provide in the Q and A his the his hometown, his address, so we can respond to him and also his topic and we'll also make sure we call on him. Ruby?
Hi, good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting. We are now at the public comment portion of the meeting. When the board listens to issues and concerns but does not respond to statements, attendees wishing to make a public comment are asked to please enter their name, address and topic into the Q and A box located in the bottom central of the Zoom meeting page. Each speaker will be allotted a group to speak. If you wish to have a reply to a concern or question, please include your mailing address and written reply will be mailed to you. Thank you. Bienvenidos a la reunión de la Junta Educativa. En este momento abrimos al público la oportunidad de hacer comentarios donde la junta escucha preocupaciones y preguntas pero no da respuesta. Se pide a los asistentes que desean hacer un comentario público que por favor ingrese su número, su nombre, perdón, dirección y tengan el cuadro de preguntas y respuestas localizado en el centro inferior en la reunión del sitio Zoom. Cada orador tiene hasta tres minutos para presentar su tema. Si usted desea obtener una respuesta a su pregunta o inquietud, por favor incluya su dirección y nos encargaremos de enviarle la respuesta por correo. Gracias.
Mr. Sanders, you're muted.
Yep, I realized that. Sorry. I unmuted our first speaker and forgot to mute myself. Our first speaker is Sarah Mulder. I've unmuted her so she can take her three minutes.
All right. Good evening. I hope everyone and their families are doing well. The purpose of my conversation this evening is twofold and centers around doing what's best for our students and staff in our new reality of this unprecedented time. And staff in our new reality of this unprecedented time. First, I would like to ask that do we, the District U forty six Educational Assistance? Join in the planning of returning to school in the fall? Do we, members, our frontline frontline workers and as such, have many safety concerns and procedures to consider? We are seven hundred para educators, library paras, sign language interpreters, homeschool liaison and piano accompaniment. We are the ones that know our classroom, how they work, the routine and, more importantly, our students. We know what a safe return to school means. It's important and beneficial for all of our nearly. Forty thousand students that we be involved in the return to school planning. This show of equity will enable us all to provide the best possible transition to a new normal at school. Second is the urgent need to get technology for Paris. We must address the digital divide and have the tools necessary to consistently support students during. Excuse me, during in-person and remote learning. We had to switch to remote learning this past year. And students suffered because their paras were unable to connect and help them as they usually did in the classroom. Without district technology, we couldn't participate. That's hundreds of educators who had no means to communicate and connect with our students. And sometimes to get necessary information from administration. Who knows what school will be like in the upcoming months, but we know that districts need to have plans A, B and C at a minimum. And we have a unique knowledge about our students and schools community. Money provided by the CARES Act can be used to pay employees. Who are assisting in the planning of returning to school. And for the purchase of technology for us to assist students in learning. Using the CARES Act fund to support the planning for returning to school in the fall. And to get Paris technology now will benefit students for both. In-person instruction support and when remote learning is once again the way of teaching and learning. It will bridge the inequities of the haves and have nots. When you do all the little things right, it adds up to a good big thing. I ask that you not underestimate the impact that we have. Not only on the academics, but also on the lives of our students we work with. Allow us to join in the planning of the return to school. And give us the technology we need to support the students. Close that inequitable inequitable gap and let's work together to make students' education better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andre Allen. Uh Mr. Allen, let me unmute you and then I will start the timer. Mr. Allen, you should be unmuted if you click your unmute button.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I want to commend the School Board, Tony Sanders, the Equity Committee and District U forty six. For adopting this outstanding resolution and call to action. And to just hear Tony say that more financial resources will be committed to the plan of action. That's as somebody would say, that's putting your money where your mouth is. Or where one teacher said, well, your treasury is, that's where your heart is also. Voices must be lifted up to speak out against racism and police brutality. And the racial injustices that permeate practically every aspect of our society. It was horrifying and traumatic to watch George Floyd, an African American man tortured. And murdered before our eyes as he pleaded for his life. As he cried out for help and pleaded with the officer stating, I can't breathe. And called out for help from his mother, who had already been dead for two years, who died before our eyes. Reverend Al Sharpton in giving his eulogy indicated that George Floyd. Is a symbol of the pain and mistreatment that African Americans have experienced in America for over four hundred years. Reverend Sharpton said, we want the knee removed from our necks. And now we just saw another African American man, Rashad Brooks, killed, shot in the back. While running away from a police officer, going from sleeping in his car while intoxicated. To being the victim of a homicide corroborated by the coroner's report. People are protesting these injustices. It is gratifying to see and to be a part of these peaceful protests. That are occurring all over America and in some places around the world. On the neck of George Floyd, that officer put his knee down. But Americans across this country are standing up and speaking out against racial injustices, police brutality and racial inequities. About eight years ago, when Dr. Torres was the superintendent. At the start of that school year, Dr. Torres introduced his cabinet at a community meeting in the Library of Elgin High School. After he introduced his cabinet, I stood up and commended Dr. Torres for the diversity of his cabinet. Two African Americans, one male, one female, one Indian female, one Hispanic male and two whites, one male and one female. I said, you did not allow for any excuses for why you couldn't have a very diverse cap. I went on to say that I have substitute taught at all the school districts. U forty six high schools, all of the middle schools and most of the elementary schools. But the kind of diversity I see with your cabinet, I don't see in the school system. Is there a plan in place to have that kind of diversity throughout the schools? Dr. Torres said, we're working on it. I'm encouraged and delighted that a plan now exists. Under the leadership of Tony Sanders, with the approval of the School Board and this district. I'm also glad to know that the late Ron Ragland was very instrumental in helping to put together such a plan. With the formation of the Equity Committee that has done a tremendous job. And phenomenal work in putting forth a plan and goes in alignment with the district's strategic plan. As a newly joined member of the Equity Committee and a member of this community for over ten years. It is my hope that the district will invest with renewed energy. Financial dollars and whatever resources necessary that the actions stated would be achieved so that the plans can be fulfilled. So then when history looks back at School District U forty six and the history books are written. They will be able to say, in the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. School District U forty six was not a tail light, but a headline with the cause of racial justice and inequity. And that U forty six indeed is a great place for all students to learn. All teachers to teach and all employees to work. All means all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you very much. Um. Okay, I'm gonna back up one minute. I just got a message from one board member who meant to say something in other business. Um John, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I feel we'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the our senior class graduation. Um you know, uh I watched each one of them. The speakers were all remarkable. I appreciated their words. I can't. Uh restate anything that they did, so leave leave their words to speak for themselves, but uh. Um it was, you know, obviously not what anybody had in mind six months ago, but uh. Congratulations to the class of twenty twenty and and good luck going forward.
Congratulations to them all. Okay, consent agenda, Mr.
On the consent agenda, we have the personnel report and workers' compensation cases, minutes of the board meeting, June first, twenty twenty. List of authorized depositories. Resolution authorizing the transfer of interest earnings from the working cash fund to the operation and maintenance fund. A resolution authorizing the school treasurer to make bond and interest payments. A resolution authorizing participation in federal and state supported programs. A resolution requesting approval of hazardous transportation area designations. A contract for teaching and learning, English Language Learners Department. With Northern Illinois University bilingual ESL teacher cohort. A contract renewal for Educational Services Center K twelve insight for Let's Talk customer service and stakeholder engagement solution. Contract renewal for information services for AirWatch mobile device management software. Contract renewal for information services for Microsoft license renewal. Contract renewal for information services for Cisco Smart Net License Renewal. Contract renewal for Illinois Association of School Boards annual dues. A bid from transportation for a two-way radio system. Bid from plant operations for equipment purchase, five pickup trucks. Proposal from plant operations for the equipment purchase of playgrounds. Proposal from food and nutrition services for the purchase of two food packaging machines. And finally, we have building permits, including Bartlett High School Dectron Unit Replacement Project two oh five. Coleman Elementary School Hallways HVAC and Tunnel Dehumidifiers Project. Elgin High School Domestic Water Phase Three. Harriet Gifford Elementary School Univents and Air Chill Coolers Project. McKinley Elementary School HVAC Lower Level Project. Streamwood High School Sidewalk and Freezer Pan Rehab Courts. And finally, Washington Elementary School Sidewalk and Drainage Project.
Are there any items board members would like removed from the consent agenda? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Hello, Eva Porter. Second, Veronica Nolan.
Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes, sorry.
No problem. Uh Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion is approved seven zero.
Discussion action, Mr. Sanders.
Our first item under discussion action are itemized bills for June fifteenth, twenty twenty. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the list of bills in the amount of eight million, one hundred and forty four thousand, thirty eight dollars and forty nine cents.
I have a motion to approve the list of bills in the amount of eight million, one hundred and forty four thousand, thirty eight dollars and forty nine cents.
So moved, this is Kate.
Second, Eva Porter.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion is approved seven zero.
Our next is the welding curriculum revision proposal. This was presented on the work session at the last meeting. And returns tonight for a final vote. Ms. Stewart, Coordinator of Current Technical Education, is available if you have additional questions. With that, administration recommends approval of the welding curriculum revision proposal.
I have a motion to approve the welding curriculum revision proposal. So move, this is Melissa.
Second, John.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion is approved seven zero.
Our next is the Project Lead the Way Curriculum Proposal. This was also presented at the last work session. And Ms. McMullin returns tonight if the board has questions. Administration recommends the Board of Education adopt the Project Lead the Way Curriculum Proposal.
I have a motion to approve the Project Lead the Way Curriculum Proposal.
So move, this is Veronica.
Second, this is Melissa.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion is approved seven zero.
Our next is the Student Code of Conduct, also a work session item returning now under discussion action. Uh Dr. Barazza, uh as well as Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Rodriguez are available to answer any additional board questions. With that, administration recommends the Board of Education approve the Student Code of Conduct.
I have a motion to approve the Student Code of Conduct.
So move, this is Veronica.
Second, this is Melissa.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion is approved seven zero.
Our next item is a first time on discussion action. This is an item that we had to uh expend the money. Bring it back in for the board to ratify the expense. It's the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Instruction and Equity Virtual Graduation twenty twenty. Ms. Starvich is here available to answer any additional board questions as well as Mr. Phelps. Um administration recommends approval of the invoices from Hef Jones in the amount of twenty six thousand, six hundred and forty one dollars. And requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. The expenditure we charged the educational fund and was included in the budget for the fiscal year. I would note, and there was a question from a board member that we responded to, Mrs. Porter asked. Uh in light of the snafu that affected the South Elgin High School graduation. Would there be cause to lower this uh the cost of this contract? We will actively work to do that. However, we still would like to seek board authority to go ahead and. Proceed this evening with at least the amount that we're asking authorization for.
I have a motion to approve the invoices from Hef Jones in the amount of twenty six thousand, six hundred and forty one dollars.
So move, this is Veronica.
Again, this is Kate.
Any questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion is approved seven zero.
Next is the Notice Remedy for Teachers C. The matter before the Board of Education is whether or not to approve the notice of remedy for Teacher C, Taryn Sodillo. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve this notice to remedy.
But I have a motion to approve the note. To approve the notice to remedy for Teacher C, Aaron Sodillo.
So move, this is Veronica.
Second, John.
This is Kate.
So I have Ms. Nolan and Mr. Deveraux.
Sure.
Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion is approved seven zero.
The other business CAC update, um. Don't think they're doing anything at the moment.
I don't see anybody on here that would be for CAC.
Other business, Mr. Sanders.
Our other business item is the May financial report. Here to present that is Mr. Varnage, Director of Financial Operations. Neil?
All right, thank you. Uh so at the end of May, our total fund balances are two hundred eighty six million, six hundred fifty nine thousand, nine hundred eighty four dollars. Uh which is a decrease of seventeen point three million from April. In May, we received seven point seven million in tax revenue. For the state payments, we received evidence-based funding payments of seventeen point nine million and five point seven million in categorical payments. Uh which were for the second quarter. So at the end of May, the balance due from the state was five point four million. Uh however, to give you an update on last Friday, we did receive four point nine million for the third quarter. So our current balance is about six hundred and seventy five thousand due from the state.
Any questions? Go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead, dear.
Just a little bit more. Our federal grant revenue was four point one million. And uh through the end of May, we've uh received eighty two percent of our budgeted annual revenue. And we expect to receive about twenty percent in June. Uh for the expenditures, we've spent ninety two percent of the annual budget and expect to spend about eight percent in June. So at this point, it looks like we should uh finish pretty close to even or maybe a small surplus. And if there's any questions, I could answer them at this time.
Any questions?
Any further update?
Go ahead, John.
Any further update on tax revenue? Did we get anything yet? Uh the property tax?
Yes, so far we have received about thirty three million from DuPage. And the Kane County Distribution, uh which is usually pretty large, uh is due later this week.
Are we just, this is slightly related to the budget. Are we keeping track of extra expenses because of COVID nineteen? Are we doing, we are, okay, good.
Yes, we are working on our uh CARES Act application and so all those eligible expenses uh that we've. Had since mid-March, whatever we can put in there, they get reimbursed through that. Uh we're working on it.
Okay, thank you.
We haven't, we haven't received any of that yet. It's all. We're sort of earmarking what's been spent. We know what what grants that have to be, I don't know if they're grants, but. The money that has to be applied for and some expectation that we'll get at least a portion.
Yes, yes, we have some of those expenses already showing in the financials. Um and then once we finish the application and that gets approved. Then we can submit for all the expenses we've already had and we should get reimbursement hopefully in July.
Right.
Thanks.
And Dale, is there any expenses that we're going to incur because of COVID that aren't going to be reimbursed by the CARES Act? And are we keeping track of any of, of any of those expenses?
Uh, that, I, I don't have, uh, I can't think of something off the top of my head that we haven't put in the application yet.
Okay.
I, I think the more the, and Dale, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know the, the, right now for this current fiscal year, I think we have it pretty well covered. Anything that came up, we were able to cover. It's next year that we're, you know, depending on what type of, what school looks like next year, that's where the challenge is going to come in. In, in determining whether or not the seven plus million that was set aside for U forty-six will cover our actual expenses.
Okay.
Yeah. Good question.
Any other questions? Hey, thank you, Mr. Vernage. Work session, Mr. Sanders.
I am not sure if I'm, just if you can give me one second, I'm trying to see if my screen is showing. Is my screen showing a PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Well, it'd be nice if it showed me that PowerPoint. All right, just one second. I've got to find it. There we go. All right, so our first, uh, work session item this evening is the dual language social studies elective resource. Uh, Jacob Van de Mortel, Coordinator of K twelve Social Studies, is here to present and will introduce any other speakers he might have with him. Jacob?
Everybody, it is just me tonight. Um, I am here to propose, uh, to show you guys, two resources for already board-approved social studies electives, uh, that would be offered now in Spanish language. Uh, so if you move to the next slide, please. Um, this would go into effect for next year. Um, and again, these are already board-approved classes, but we are seeking to add Spanish language options for those courses and these resources, uh, would provide those Spanish language resources. Uh, this aligns to student achievement because it gives more flexibility, uh, and opportunities to demonstrate mastery to our dual language students as well as providing our staff with, um, the resources they need to do the job well and keep them engaged. Um, the rationale here is this, uh, in two thousand and nineteen, we knew that we needed to offer more elective courses across the board, not just in social studies, but across the world, dual language program. Um, you know, has requirements for students who need to take, uh, certain numbers of classes in Spanish and certain numbers of classes in English. And when they're in, um, certain pathways or when they're trying to seek, uh, their courses, they run into the difficulty of maybe that class is only available in English. They need more options to take additional Spanish classes. And so we looked at our, uh, course selection and said, we believe that these, uh, we started with six courses could be resourced in Spanish language if the opportunity presented itself and the students were interested in taking them. Put them all on course selection sheets and then let student interest determine what courses we would actually be able to run and then what resources we would go out and seek. Um, and so, uh, we put those six courses on and when students registered, they registered for World History and Advanced Placement Psychology. And again, these are dual language World History and dual language AP Psychology. Um, and so we said, we're going to go out and find resources for those. Um, and then that's right when quarantine hit. And so went the, the typical call to committee and all those, um, sorts of situations, but we also decided kind of in the middle of the process, it was really important for us to find resources that had online components. Um, because oftentimes when we're trying to find Spanish-only resources, we're going to Spain, we're going to Mexico and, um, we're buying textbooks that don't always have additional online components. And so we kind of paused midway through and said, we need to start fresh and solicit new, uh, new looks to make sure we have online materials. And so, uh, that takes us to the next slide, please. Um, like I said, we did all of this. It's right in between, um, student enrollment and private emphasis. And we decided we need to make sure we had remote learning opportunities. Next slide, please. And so the, we currently have is we have social studies options, uh, for dual language students to take civics or the corresponding AP US Government course and economics or the corresponding AP course, um, AP Macro in Spanish. And then as juniors, they take history or AP US History in English. This would provide two more courses, dual language World History and dual language AP Psychology as elective options for our dual language students. So not every dual language student needs to take these courses, but if they're looking for additional courses in Spanish to provide that flexibility, these two courses would now be taught in Spanish with Spanish resources to provide that flexibility. So the resources we are looking forward, uh, asking to bring forward is for dual language AP Psych. We're looking at Fundamentos de Secundaria. Um, and this is a book out of Spain used at the University of Salamanca in Barcelona uh, and their freshman intro and psych courses. Uh, we like it because it has an online PDF version that will become available as soon as, um, we purchase it. So even if the books can't be handed out to students, we have that PDF option right away. Uh, and then for dual language World History from Cengage, we have the National Geographic World History with civilizations, ancient through early modern times, the Spanish Student Edition. Um, and what Cengage and National Geographic have pledged to do is to provide all of their high school social studies books in Spanish within the next decade. And so we look forward to seeing more options from them on the coming years. Uh, so we would have these for next year to, uh, we have the registrations. Kids are already enrolled in these courses, uh, AP Dual Language Psych and Dual Language World History. And so these would be the resources they would use on day one. As you can see, the cost here, um, for Fundamentos de Secundaria, uh, we're getting two hundred and forty-five kids enrolled. Uh, so about twenty thousand, eight eighty-six, twenty-five. And for World History, about three hundred and eighty kids enrolled, so forty-one thousand, oh eighty-five. Grand total of sixty-four, oh twenty-six, thirteen. I believe I have that broken down on the next slide. As a, uh, per pupil cost of one oh two forty-four and, uh, both of these come with six-year licensing agreements for the online materials. That's a cost of seventeen oh seven per student per year. Like all of our resources in curricula, we would, um, evaluate the usage of both the online resources and the text, uh, to meet our curriculum and our common assessments. Um, and make sure that it correlates to the outcomes we desire over the course of the next years. And that concludes this presentation.
Any questions?
Can I just verify what you said at the, um, the AP Psych? Don't make me pronounce it in Spanish. The, the AP Psych class is the same textbook they use at the University of Salamanca in Spain?
Correct.
Um, that's amazing.
And their intro to psychology course for psychology majors.
Amazing. Is that, are we able to have like contact with those teachers, those professors to share resources or is that on the scope of what would be even useful?
So I suspect we could actually set that up. The reason, um, I, I went there is I had a friend in college who did a term abroad there. And so I was like, I'm really hard, it's hard to find these. Where should I look? And she directed me there. So I'm sure we could set that up. Um, we haven't done that yet, but I'm sure it's possible.
Uh, it wasn't necessarily a requirement. It was just a, a thought that might be an interesting exchange, but I mean, what works is fine.
Any other questions?
Oh, I have a quick question. Um, so the AP classes that are, um, offered as dual language classes, will the AP test then be taken in Spanish?
No, the AP test is still an English-only test. And so we've had one year of experience with this, um, in our dual language AP Macro and dual language AP US Government Politics. Results have not come in yet. Um, it was first time for the teacher and obviously for the students in a class where they're learning in Spanish and, um, providing terms in, in English. Um, and there was, uh, I'm sure that you can speak more of this if we needed to, but, um, there was some accommodation made to preparing in English where you would typically really stick to Spanish in a dual language course.
Awesome. And one more, uh, follow-up to that. Will, um, will we be looking forward to working with, um, the College Board in the future to making the test, uh, as well in Spanish or?
They are aware that that is something we think would be excellent.
You mentioned that, um, there were six courses we, we put on the sheets for the kids to, to sign up. Will we do that in the, in the next year as well? So if the, if something else becomes like pre-law or something becomes popular, the kids may?
Absolutely, yes. Um, and the geography, uh, regular level psychology, World History and AP World History, we're additionally on there.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Great, thank you. All right, next item, Mr. Sanders.
Our next item is the English Language Learner's Supplemental Spanish Literacy Resource, Arriba la Lectura. And here to present that is Dr. Annette Acevedo, who will also introduce her team members as she presents. Dr. Acevedo?
Thank you, gracias, uh, Mr. Sanders, and, um, good evening to, to, to everyone. So, Mr. Sanders, if you'd like to, uh, sorry. If you'd like to. Uh, yes, okay, perfect. Um, you know, we are here tonight to present. I'm trying to minimize if you give me a, uh, it's not minimizing my, uh, there we go. We're here to present, um, this evening, uh, the, uh, resource update for Arriba la Lectura by Houghton Mifflin-Harkworth for adoption by, by the Board of Education. Uh, presenting with me tonight from the ELL Department are Sylvia Rodriguez, ELL Coordinator, and Maria Chamorro, ELL, uh, Instructional Coach. We thank you in advance for your time and support. Uh, next, please. Evening, we will be showcasing Arriba la Lectura, the updated version of Cenderos, our current resource to support literacy in the dual language program. Cenderos is being phased out and expiring. This is not a new resource adoption, but rather a replacement of the old with the updated version, which is called Arriba la Lectura. Fortunately, it includes some enhancements that we will share along, uh, with the overall components of the updated resource. The updated Arriba la Lectura, uh, culturally and linguistically responsive resource fosters a quality learning experience that helps prepare U forty-six English learners and dual language students to compete in a globalized society and is consistent with our strategic plan for student achievement. Ms. Rodriguez and Ms. Chamorro will now present the details of this resource to the board with Ms. Rodriguez coming up next. Next, please.
Gracias, doctor Acevedo. Uh, Arriba la Lectura aligns well with the new U forty-six integrated curriculum and the Common Core status standards with work and progress for the alignment with WIDA's Spanish language development standards. It follows a workshop model which also aligns with this balanced literacy framework. Next, please. Next, please. Arriba la Lectura incorporates the research of growth mindset and social emotional learning into every lesson through the exclusive partnership with Mindset Works, leveraging Dr. Carol Drex's research. Arriba la Lectura provides strategies that promote a classroom community and it also helps the students embrace learning, develop curiosity and wonder, and learn that it is okay to, to try something again. In short, Arriba la Lectura supports social and emotional growth by shifting to a learning mindset. Next, please. In this slide, you will see the essential features of Arriba la Lectura. Teachers will understand and experience that great instruction begins with a popular and engaging cultural and linguistically responsive literature that students will love. It provides a flexible instructional model that allows teachers to teach to their preference while responding to the strengths and needs of all, of their students. It includes ex- extensive writing strategies and skills that will not only provide scaffolding for young writers, but also support teachers in their writing process. And the foundational skills components, which is specific to the Spanish language. It embedded within, uh, the context of culturally diverse literature that promotes students' literacy growth and Spanish language acceleration. Next, please. Among several renowned authors who have contributed to the best practice fund within Arriba la Lectura are Dr. Alan Izquierdo, Alma Florada, and Isabel Campoy. They reviewed and selected the best authentic Hispanic literature, including fiction and nonfiction on trade publishers and as well as the highest quality transadaptations, none of which were approved until their highest expectations were met. Next, please. As we continue to work towards by literacy and developing Spanish academic language in our classroom, acquiring high, high-quality resources to support this goal is very important that we, uh, it's very important. We are glad that this updated version incorporates more and more resources such as big books. Can you please, uh, click? That are relevant, culturally diverse, and aligned with the content demands and the standards. Can you please click? In grades kindergarten to second grade, Arriba la Lectura engages the students in fictions and nonfiction read alouds by modeling fluency and exposing them to different genders and providing interactions between the text and the readers through booksticks, which are laminated comprehension questions located on the back of the big books and read alouds. Students are not only supported by the comprehension tools, but, but through the section children would love to, or a los niños les encantará, where students are invited to think beyond the books as they engage in fun, organic conversations, and activities that are text-related. Furthermore, the reading companion, my libro, mi libro or my book, provides the opportunity to address the speaking and listening domains through meaningful dialogues. This resource includes access to literature, fifty percent fiction and fifty percent nonfiction for grades K to six. Now, Ms. Chamorro will continue addressing the other components of this resource. Thank you very much, muchas gracias. All of the literature and instruction is organized into modules and built on the workshop model of instruction. Read alouds are followed by a small group time and each lesson closes with a whole group rap app. Next, please. Next? Next? Thank you. Arriba la Lectura follows a consistent three-step lesson plan for each day's whole group mini lesson. Step one is connect and teach, where a specific skill or strategy is introduced, supported by an anchor chart with visuals. Step two is apply to text, where the teacher models the skill. And step three is engage and respond, which allows for discussion of the literature. The tabletop mini lessons are flip charts that reinforce specific reading skills and strategies, such as elements of a story like characters. Next, please. Arriba la Lectura provides weekly level readers books and literature cards for guided reading. Text characteristics such as vocabulary words, sentence complexity, and word count have been carefully considered in the leveling of each Spanish text. For striving or advanced readers, as well as students that need differentiated support, all teachers have access to K through six weekly level readers online to support students at the readability level. The pick and teach lesson plans, as shown here, include vocabulary and language practice and hands-on activities. Next, please. Thank you. My teaching pal, compañero de enseñanza, is a supplement to the teacher's guide and offers instructional notes with guidance on important reading strategies and skills, such as closed reading and academic discussions. What is particularly helpful for dual language instruction is the support provided by the feature dual language nodes, which provides extra support for Spanish language development and oracy. As shown here, you will see tips for heterogeneous grouping and interactions. An equity plus feature of this resource includes support not only for English learners, but also highlights specific support for two-way programs with English-dominated students, which is a unique feature of this resource. Next, please.
Next, please. Next, please. Thank you. Spanish foundational skills focuses on the phonics and phonemic awareness approach with a global method, introducing syllables, sounds, and letters in meaningful contexts and not in isolation. The instruction begins with an authentic Spanish poem and is delivered through a scaffolded approach using a gradual release of responsibility. I do, we do, and you do. The scope and sequence was built from the ground at, for all grades, to address rigorous standards and the specific needs of students. Lecturas iniciales, or start-flight readers, as translated in English, allow for students to truly apply foundational skills in context. Additionally, this resource includes online, K through second articulation audios and videos to model the pronunciation of syllables which parents have asked for to support learning at home, especially if they don't know the language. We need to go one back for the next slide, if you don't mind. Yeah, here is, go, thank you. As an update for Cenderos, the bridge selection section is specific to growth linguistic connections, which refers to making sense of the similarities and differences between Spanish and English, using the students' linguistic repertoire to access meaning and sustaining a learning environment that fosters the acquisition of literacy. Next, please. Linguistic Extension Guide provides the opportunity for small-group lessons and reflection on the following areas: appreciation of Hispanic language and culture through nuestra lengua es arte, or our language is art in English, that helps students make cultural, linguistic, academic, and personal connections through a rich collection of literature; development of metalinguistic awareness; and extension of academic literacy. Next, please. Thank you. Revista Aventuras are high-quality magazines found in grades K through 6, which contain 100% authentic Hispanic literature and include selections originally published by Spanish trade book publishers from around the world. The magazine lessons focus on reading and analyzing literature, written response to reading, developing academic vocabulary, and engaging in collaborative conversations. In order to further develop language and encourage reading, this resource also offers a collection of independent reading books. And now, Ms. Rodriguez will lead us to the conclusion of our presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Chamorro. Would you mind clicking, please? A few more? Okay, thank you so much. All right, so the writing workshop is another essential component of this resource that supplements writing pathways. The district's adapted resource. The writing workshop is organized around 12 modules highlighting different forms of writing. It provides explicit instruction for teachers, anchor charts, and integrated grammar instruction. A mentor text is essential for each module. It serves as a screen board for students' writing. This resource also includes a suite of Spanish-specific grammar mini-lessons that can be used in a small or whole-group making writing instruction manageable and flexible. Please click. One more, please. Thank you. In cooperation with experts in the field, Dr. Elena Izquierdo led the creation of the robust tool reinforced in this slide, the Dual Language Implementation Guide. This resource features Spanish as a global language with information about lexical variations or regional lessons. It helps teachers guide students in understanding the lexical variation they are not only encountering in Arriba la Lectura's authentic literature, but also in their interactions with their peers or the community from different Spanish-speaking backgrounds, thus creating an inclusive atmosphere in the classroom. It also includes other tools that support interlinguistic connections and extensions, such as dictations and cross-curricular vocabulary. Please click. One more, please. In support, in support to blend the learning model for instruction, the Common Cut Reach allows the integration of Arriba la Lectura digital content into Canvas, the district new adaptive learning management system. All the digital features of Arriba la Lectura live in the Houghton-Muffin-Harkor dashboard app. This tool takes data and suggests groups of students with similar needs for small-group instruction. Teachers can easily customize these groups if needed. App will also suggest related resources for a given standard, which teachers can then add to the lesson plan or assign directly to the students. Next, please. This slide shows the planned implementation timeline for grades kindergarten through 6. 4th and 6th grade will be first, since those licenses expire during the 2020-21 school year, followed by the years in grade described here. The phase-in is in alignment to the similar phase-in process we follow for Cenderos and correlates to when the license expires for each grade level. If necessary, we will have the option to activate the digital product sooner. Based on this implementation timeline, the amount for kindergarten to sixth grade is $1,613,863, which represents well over 900,000 of cost savings by purchasing all at once. Next, please. Houghton-Muffin-Corps provides professional learning opportunities, including coaching, to support the use of Arriba la Lectura as an updated version of Cenderos. They will provide complimentary getting started sessions for teachers receiving the Arriba la Lectura resource. The ELL Department will work in collaboration with their professional development team to coordinate training opportunities, which will include an overview of the new resource and information on how to use the online components. Possible options include the following designated professional development days: district collaborative days, professional practice days, and the annual dual-language teacher academy, as well as other possible options. Even this resource is on the same platform as Cenderos, we anticipate familiarity with accessing and understanding the resource for dual-language teachers. Next, please. This concludes our presentation. We are now ready for any questions you may have. Gracias, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from board members?
This is Melissa, I just wanted to thank you for answering the couple of questions that I had. I'm glad that we're getting substantial cost savings by purchasing these altogether, but I'm also glad that we're able to act on those, those resources then if we, if we want to activate them sooner. This does seem like it's a great resource. It's not really possible for me to, you know, take the one resource and compare it to the one that we're using right now, but I, it really seems very comprehensive, and I like the different facets of literacy that it, that it, it deals with. Do you anticipate any challenges with implementation?
I do not. I think one of the things that, you know, we had mentioned is it is on the same platform as the current resource they have now. So, there is familiarity with the teachers, and we will make sure for any new teachers that, you know, we offer professional development.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Well, one thing that struck me when you gave your presentation was that, since we'll be one-to-one with Chromebooks pretty much K through 12, it'll be interesting to see how effective this program is when all the kids have Chromebooks, so they can do things at home, for example. So... Anything else?
I just want to say I'm excited to see this. My, my dual-language student was, was not a fan of Cenderos. So, seeing this looks like it's definitely going to be more engaging and a little easier for them to, well, engage in, I guess.
It looks like a great program.
Some of the enhanced features as well.
Yeah, no, that'll definitely be nice.
Anyone else?
I said it looks like a great program.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah. Hey, thank you very much. Before we move on to the next part, work session resolutions. Ms. Nolan just texted me that she had to leave, so she, she has left the meeting. So, work session, Mr. Sanders, resolutions.
Thank you, Madam President. The next resolution is, or the first resolution is a resolution for the display and public hearing on the School District 246 Budget for 2020-2021 school year. Here to present the resolution is Dale Burnage.
Thank you. Yes, this resolution addresses the annual requirement to display the school district's tentative budget for at least 30 days prior to final adaption. The tentative budget will be brought to the Board of Education on August 17, 2020, and will be on display for public inspection beginning August 18, 2020. Request for the final adaption of the budget will be at the September 28, 2020 board meeting. The resolution also addresses the requirement regarding the notice of public hearing. Notice must be given in a publication of general circulation at least 30 days prior to the public hearing on the school district's budget. So, this resolution sets the date of the public hearing on the district's budget as September 14, 2020, and the notice will be published on August 11, 2020. Administration will recommend adaption of this resolution at the July 20, 2020 board meeting. And this timeline fulfills all of the Illinois School Code requirements regarding the budget and public hearing. If there's any questions, I could ask for them at this time.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Burnage.
Our next is an annual resolution declaring the need to continue usage of temporary classrooms. Mr. Phelps and Sheila Downs are both available to answer any board questions. The FY 2021 Temporary Facility Reports is attached and contains Part 1 and Part 2. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution declaring the need to continue usage of temporary classrooms.
Are there any questions? And thank you for answering my question I had submitted earlier.
Thank you for answering my question as well.
Okay. Work session, yeah.
Okay. Contracts over 25,000 are first as a contract for career and technical education or for solid professor-online student training modules. Mr. Phelps will remain for this part of the presentation. Ms. Mustorovic, as well as Tracy Stewart, Coordinator of CTE. Administration recommends approval of the contract with solid professor for three years in the amount of $47,250 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged as the Career and Technical Education Illinois Grant and is included in the budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
Are there any questions?
So, it, it, it looks like these tutorials will enable students to access the tutorials at home, right? Especially if we're in some form of blended or distance learning in the fall. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We were actually looking to pursue this as a supplemental resource prior to COVID, so I engaged the vendor in January in regards to how we can support our students. They offer really in-depth and engaging opportunities for students to learn or go above what they might be doing on a specific project for any of the software that they're using. And then they also have supplemental lessons about 3D printing and, you know, just various technologies that they might be interested in engaging in, but might not be using directly on that project. And in light of distance learning, we did have the opportunity to have some students pilot it, knowing that we were exploring the opportunity, and the students really enjoyed it. They don't have to have the software to complete the modules on their Chromebook, so that was a concern of ours, that the way that the modules are set up, they kind of tap into the, the software's capabilities without having to have it installed on their Chromebook. And students thought that they were really useful and enjoyed the various modules that they completed.
I appreciate you saying that, because that was going to be my next question, is how, how beneficial they're going to be if they don't have that software? Because sometimes it's really difficult to, you know, get an instruction on something, and if you can't actually have your hands on that, that software, it makes it a little bit more difficult to get anything out of it, so.
Yeah. Absolutely. And that was a, that was a concern of the, the teachers when we were talking about how they would be able to utilize it in the classroom. And they, that was a big concern, and though, as, so as we went through the pilot, we were sure to gather feedback from the students about were there any modules that, you know, proved more difficult to engage with, or any software applications? And by and large, every student was able to, to work within the module without any problems.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you for answering my question that I posed.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
All right, our next is a contract renewal for human resources and business services for risk management policies. Mr. Phelps and Beth Berg, Coordinator of Employee Benefits, are here to answer any board questions. Administration recommends approval of the contract renewal with CNA for the property insurance policy and Star Insurance Company for the workers' compensation excess policy in the amount of $544,124 for property coverage and $282,230 for workers' compensation excess coverage, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the TORT fund and is included in the budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, John here, quick question. The, on the property side, is the significant value increase related to property acquisition or just an increase in value? Is it the new, the new transportation space?
Answer that question, Mr. Dye. What? What, what it is, is that the district, every 10 years, goes through an evaluation of the property, and that was what was conducted prior to the 2018-19 school year. And the vendor has agreed to work that in over a two-year period of the total value of the adjusted value of the district.
Okay. Because obviously, it's a sort of, and, and that's not uncommon in, in insurance, where they keep adjusting the, sort of the insurance to value. So, it's just that, it's just sort of a catch-up over multiple years of, obviously, our, the value of our property didn't go up 20% in one year, but just blended over a bunch of years.
The last time this was done was 2018.
Okay. And then the other, I'll just comment, the, there's a sort of a net price increase on the insurance, and that is, from my little corner of the insurance world, just in line, or maybe even slightly better than other property insurance increases that are happening across the market, so.
Yes, that, that's correct. Even last year, because we went up to a bunch of other vendors to evaluate how well we're getting our pricing, and then it reflected, our costs would have went up substantially if we would have tried to move to another vendor, because they wouldn't want an evaluation.
Makes sense. Good, all right, thanks.
Any other questions? Hey, thank you.
Our next is a contract renewal for curriculum instruction with iStation. Mr. Phelps is here, as well as Dr. Schrod and Celia Banks, Coordinator of Elementary Literacy and Libraries. Administration recommends approval of the contract renewal with iStation in the amount of $1,217,594.32 for a three-year contract at $396,931.44 per year, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund and the Title II fund, and is included in the budget.
Are there any questions? Next item, please.
Next is a contract renewal for specialized student services and curriculum instruction for Read 180 Systems 44 recess. In addition to Mr. Phelps, we have Dr. Satterwhite, Dr. Schrod, Ms. Fabianczyk, and Ms. Ryan, who are available to answer board questions. Administration recommends approval of the contract renewal with Hooten Mifflin Hardcore for four years to include one year of professional development in the amount of $238,147.27 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. The expenditure will be charged to the federal IDEA grant, the educational fund, and the Title II grant, and is included in the budget.
Are there any questions?
So thank you for answering my question on how well we met our, our usage goal in the last year. I, I'm having trouble pulling up the, the actual proposal. My internet keeps saying it's unstable, so I'm not even going to try anymore. It just, the reason why I asked that is because it seemed like there's a, a pretty big leap from, you know, where we're at right now to the, the goal for next year. So I just wanted to kind of see how we're progressing from year to year and how, how lofty that, that goal is. I mean, do you, it, it looks pretty aspirational. Do you think we'll, we'll be able to get close to that?
Ms. Ryan, you want to answer that question?
Sure. So I do think that it is a, we tried our hardest to get to the goal that we had this year. Unfortunately, some of our professional development and teacher meetings did not get to happen due to COVID. But I do think that because we have an implementation plan in place, and we have supports where our teachers get to meet regularly to discuss these goals and their progress with data, that we will hopefully reach those goals. But our, our goal is to keep focusing on the implementation and also working with our, our building-level administrators to help support them as well as we're implementing these programs in our, in our schools.
Okay, thank you.
And we're identifying the correct students for placement into the program.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions? Hey, next item, Mr. Sanders.
Our next is a contract renewal for specialized student services for News2U. Dr. Satterwhite is here to answer any board questions. Administration recommends approval of the contract with News2U Unique Learning System in the amount of $120,785.60 and requests authorization to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the federal IDEA grant, and the cost is included in the budget for the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
Are there any questions? Okay, next item, please.
All right, our next is a contract renewal for specialized student services for hearing services. Dr. Satterwhite will remain. Administration recommends approval of the contract renewal with Geneva Hearing Services in the amount of $197,000 and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the, the federal IDEA grant and is included in the budget.
Are there any questions? I had one question. Are we working anything into this contract to the next contract about possible distance learning and how that may impact what they can do? I'm sorry, Mr. Satterwhite, I can't hear you.
If you click on your, the, the mute button, though it has a little up arrow, sometimes you just don't have, you're not synced up to your microphone on your computer. Do you want to try to respond in the chat box? And what we can do is, if you, with permission of the board, we can move on to the hearing and vision supervision, because I expect the same question for that. And maybe we can provide your response through the chat if that works. Would that work for you, Madam President?
Sure, even a memo, you know, to the, to the board.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right.
I guess.
See, she's typing, so we've. All right, so we've spoken with Geneva Hearing, and they are working within the CDC guidelines to provide services to students.
Great, great, thank you.
Great. Our next is a contract renewal for specialized student services for hearing and vision supervision. Administration recommends approval of the one-year contract with Northwest Illinois Association in the amount of $68,871.84. And we request authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the federal IDEA grant, and it is included in the budget.
Are there any questions? Hey, next item.
Our next is a contract renewal with Special, for specialized student services with Van Acker Behavior Consultant. This kind of ties back really to the equity presentation we had earlier. The Van Acker Behavior Consultant is working with us specifically to address the disproportionality of identification of students with special needs, blackmail students specifically, as one of the roles that they're taking on. With that, administration recommends approval of the contract renewal with Richard Van Acker EDD in the amount of $68,550 and requests authorization for administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the federal IDEA grant and is included in the budget for the fiscal year.
Are there any questions?
So I had asked a, a few questions regarding this proposal. One of my questions was how well, you know, if we have any, any feedback or any data to support how well implementation is going. And as Mr. Sanders just said, with restorative practices, with cultural competency, are we seeing any measurable gains and, or measurable decreases in behavior referrals? So I appreciate that that data is difficult to get at. What I'm wondering is if we have just any anecdotal feedback from our staff members as to how these services are going with this consultant? And how the, you know, how the implementation is progressing from their, from their viewpoint? So, you know, and I, I don't expect that to be answered right now. I'll, I'll take that in a memo, that's fine. But I just wondered if there was any, any feedback that we could get from our staff members.
If, if Dr. Satterwhite's microphone's not working, we might be able to call on Dr. Carpenter. I know that we had a conversation earlier. He's, he's been also involved in this work, and maybe he could shed some light on the response to the Van Acker contract.
Yeah. Dr. Satterwhite, are you available, or are you still down?
Well, we can, what we'll do, we'll get, we'll get something more formalized and bring it back to the board.
The one, the one thing I, the one thing I can add is, Dr. Satterwhite and I actually talked about this today, is that we, we have done some informal data gathering with, with our teachers through voluntary, they're called TIPS. They're, they're voluntary professional development, where our staff who are involved with these, these programs come and learn with Dr. Van Acker. But it's on a voluntary basis, but we received very good feedback from, from our staff regarding these various sessions. We don't have an official survey that we've done, but it certainly could be something that we could, we could look at doing moving forward to provide more specific, rather than anecdotal, provide more specific data regarding this program.
Yeah, I just, you know, now that we're, we're going on to year three of this contract, it'd be interesting to see something a little bit more concrete about, and especially because this is really important work, right? I mean, it, it's, it ties right back to our, our equity work. But, you know, more importantly, it's, it's work that, you know, is, is, has the potential to be very impactful. So I'd like to see, you know, just a little bit more concrete evidence of what is actually happening on the ground. My other question, and I, I don't know if I really came across in asking it correctly, and, and the original contract with Van Acker, there were, there were a bunch of compliance contracts, like compliance certificates and things like, I, if I'm remembering correctly, and again, I'm having difficulty pulling up documents, but like on compliance with FERPA and things like that, I just want to make sure that once he's signed those, that those then carry forward for every renewal.
And we can look at those as well and come back.
Okay.
Any other questions? And I see Dr. Satterwhite also answered. Staff voluntarily participated monthly power hours with Dr. Van Acker to provide ongoing feedback and to get questions answered. Okay, great, thank you. All right, any other questions? I believe that is the last item on the agenda, so could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
No move, this is Kate.
Second, this is Melissa.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Deveraux?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan? Oh, she left her. Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion is approved, the I, 6-0. We're adjourned.
Thank you all. Everyone stay healthy.
Yes.
You too.